I will call the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council Order. And as we always do, we take a moment of reflection and I would, I would like to mention, we received a word late yesterday, early this morning, that there were two members of the Montgomery County Public Service Authority involved in an accident out in the county. Unfortunately, one was fatal and the other was severely injured and taken to the hospital. So would you please keep their families and the rest of the county personnel in your prayers at this time? Thank you. Thank you. You would stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance of the highest councilman, Casey Jenkins.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I would like to make a comment on the call about the petition to adopt by them in the state.
Okay.
I would like to have a, um, let's make it happen.
Do we have a second to that motion to have a public hearing? Is there a second to that motion? Hearing none, that motion is denied. We have two public hearings tonight. Conditional use permit request by Shaw Development LLC, property owner Kevin Connor applicant to allow a single-family dwelling on each of two vacant lots, meeting, uh, meeting the R three multifamily residential district standards on property described as Snyder Heights subdivision, lot A and lot sixty, lot fifty A and lot sixty-four A, located on the east and west sides of the existing dwellings at six eighty-five Liberty Street. Property is zoned B three, property is designated as residential on the future land use map of the twenty thirteen Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here that would like to address this issue? We're running some sound checks, Kevin, so you'll use the microphone or get it close to you as you can, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And that's the same for council when we're discussing.
So I need to turn it on.
It's on.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Kevin Connor with Shaw Development. I think the conditional use permit application is pretty self-explanatory, but Liberty Street is residential street, just happens to be zoned B three, so we're here, we're going to build two single-family homes, two lots. One home will be a one-bedroom, eight-hundred-square-foot home, and the second will be a two-bedroom, thousand-square-foot home. I think it will complement the neighborhood and the rest of the development on Liberty Street. And I would request, under, I think it's section eight, discussion by Mayor and Council, if possible, I know it's protocol that you wait to the next meeting to make your vote, but I would request if you could consider voting tonight, just, we're ready to pull permits and so, thank you.
Do I have a motion to add that to the discussion by Mayor and Council? So I have a motion. We have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Hearing no second, that motion dies, we will review it in two weeks. Is there anyone here else here to address this issue? Hearing done, we will move on to a conditional use from request by Last Resort Inc., property owner, and Joseph L. Simmons applicant, to allow multifamily dwelling apart, dwellings, apartments, meeting the R three multifamily residential standards on approximately four-point-eight-one acres located on the south side of Cambria Street Northwest and the west of the Aquatics Center, Christiansburg Recreation Center at sixteen hundred North Franklin Street. These are zoned B three general business, there is not a proposed number of units for the development, the maximum permitted residential density is twenty acres per, twenty units per acre, dwelling unit per acre. Property is designated business commercial on the future land use map of the two thousand thirteen Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here that would like to address this issue? You would please come forward, name and address and have at it.
My name's Rebecca Hubbell and I live at sixteen forty-five Forelmont Street. I am, my family is opposed to this, it would back up to my property. Couple concerns that we have is, of course, traffic at the light at the rec center. I go that way every morning to go to work, it's already backed up with what's already there. Our property value with apartments right behind us, privacy, I'm sure they would go up, people would be looking down in my yard, noise at night or any time during the day, and also safety. My children do walk to high school and back, just concerns for their safety, and that's all.
Thank you. Senator, what else?
Hi, my name is Tanya Nguyen and I live at sixteen fifty-five Forelmont Street, Christiansburg, and I'm also here to oppose the change in the conditional use permit. My issues are, I'm concerned regarding the density, it's a four-point-eight acres of land and you can probably put around ninety-six units. I'm concerned about the number of cars and the size of the lot. I'm concerned about aesthetically, what that's going to look like budding up to our neighborhood where it's, which is a single-family residential, how it will obstruct our views, it will change the character of our neighborhood. I'm concerned with the traffic, the trash, the runoff, the safety concerns. I'm also concerned about the upkeep of the property. The current landlord that owns the property now has trouble upkeeping the land. We have to constantly call and make requests that the property be mowed, and it's a vacant lot at this point. So I'm concerned what is actually going to be up kept when there's actually people living on it. When we do call and express concerns, we get cussed out and hung up on. It's not a secret in town, the property that this landlord owns, there's already issues regarding the upkeep of multiple properties that he owns. So my main concern is just the safety issue that, you know, the apartments would, would bring, and it would be different if, you know, the, when, when I bought that property almost twenty years ago, it was a quiet, dead-end street, it was a cul-de-sac. And so for the past, all those years that we've lived there, we've had to deal with all of the traffic and construction through Lions Gate. It's a constant up and down our street with construction trucks running up and down. We've had the police called numerous times for the, the rate of speed that people are going in and out of our neighborhood. So it's already, we already have concerns and issues, and so just putting additional property back there with, with that number of units and number of people with number of vehicles is just going to cause more concerns. So I just wanted to come and oppose that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a little shorter. Good evening, I'm Judy Stevens and I live at sixteen seventy-five Forelmont. My property backs up to the back of the rec center, so I'm, I'm, they, the property we're talking about is between my home and the rec center. I am concerned on several areas. Number one, the topography of the property itself is not conducive to high-density building. There's a concern for runoff, there's a concern for maintenance of a high-density property in that area. The other concern I have is, where are people going to park when there's something happening at the rec center? I, it's my understanding that the town has tried to buy that property and it, it has not gone through. But I am concerned as a widow, and an elderly widow, I'm staring eighty in the face, and I'm concerned for my safety if there're going to be two hundred people moving in, in my backyard. And I don't, I don't think the town wants that kind of density in an older, established neighborhood. And so I'm, I'm letting you know that I certainly oppose this. I am, I am concerned not only for my safety, but for safety of other people, the traffic, the congestion, as, as has been said before, that, that light at Franklin and Cambria really backs up during rush hour traffic. Sometimes it's past Forelmont, which is the street that I live on, and sometimes it's backed up past that. And I'm really concerned if you add ninety to a hundred and eighty cars to that traffic. So bringing my concerns to you, I will leave it in your hands to make an adequate decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator, what else?
Let me raise it back up. I'm Ryan Hubbell, I live at sixteen forty-five. They've said pretty much enough. My big concerns are runoff, traffic, safety, noise and light pollution. That's, that's pretty much all I got to say, and we'd just like to ask if you would consider possibly closing this tonight, if that is not possible. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have a request from Mr. Hubbell?
Yes, and they recommended to not approve it.
It was turning. So we had a request to consider this action tonight, do I have a motion? Motion, do we have a second? That motion dies for lack of a second. Moving on to the consent agenda, the approval of minutes of January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, task order number four under contract number two-three-seven-zero-zero-zero-two-three, amendment one, to provide comprehensive design services for replacing anaerobic digester boiler in the new building at the wastewater treatment plant for a hundred and thirty-six-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Scheduled a public hearing on February twenty-seventh for a request by Cambria Storage Partners LLC for an ordinance amending chapter thirty-four, traffic and motor vehicles, Christiansburg Town Council, by adding a section thirty-dash-twenty-four, operation of golf carts on public streets in regard to provisions for the limit, for the limited operation of golf carts on town public streets. And scheduled public hearing for March twelfth, the issuance of a VRA bond for improvement projects for wastewater treatment plant.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion?
Just have pressure, as far as the golf cart, are they just going to be going from one storage unit to another across the street?
Correct.
So it's not running up and down the street?
Correct.
We, we have a limited ordinance like that now, at one point, that allows them to cross...
It had been brought up previously, but council either didn't consider or deny it one or the other. It's been probably fifteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty years, it's been a while ago, but council didn't adopt it, thank you.
Okay, very good.
Initially, it said at nine million, but they have told us that they would go higher on that bond to accommodate, if you recall, the presentation that engineering gave and all of the improvements that need to be done on the plant, they said they would go higher on that bond. So I just, I'm talking with bound couns, bound councils, they recommended that we have a public hearing for the maximum amount, and then whatever they terminate and fund would be off, basically. So it is come back to you guys with, you know, the actual amount and the bond, so get the vote on it all the time, but we have to hold the public before we can move.
Is that the...
So it's not a stop. Correct, correct, but it would be a not.
Is, is that the money that you went out and found that is at zero-point-zero-five percent?
Yeah, it's like half of the...
Yeah, it's not bad.
Um, yeah, we'll take it.
All right. So we have a motion and a second, and we, any other discussion or question? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks. Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jacob.
Aye.
Councilman Hudson.
Aye.
That is six of them, thank you very much. Under introductions and presentations, we have New River Valley Regional Commission Executive Director Kevin Byrd to provide an update on commission activities and present regarding the collaboration, collaborative of New River Valley pandemic, pandemic response timeline. Kevin?
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council, thank you all very much for the opportunity to be on your agenda tonight. And so I'm planning to share a few slides with you, general overview of New River Valley Regional Commission, because there's a new, a couple of new faces around the table here, and share some slides with you about the regional pandemic response, which is quite remarkable. And then a couple of slides at the very end about passenger rail, I know many of you are watching that closely here, but we have some new news on that item, and then have some time for questions afterward. So the service area for the New River Valley Regional Commission, it's Montgomery, Floyd, Plasky, Giles, the city of Radford, and the towns therein. So that's thirteen local governments, four counties, one city, and eight towns, and we're unique in the New River Valley in that we have, higher ed was enabled in the year two thousand by the General Assembly, and at that time, Virginia Tech and Radford University joined the commission, and in two thousand and eighteen, New River Community College joined as well. And really, every day, we're focused on collaborative impact, helping our communities across the region work together for large-scale projects, and then we're also involved in delivering technical assistance. Right now, we're working with the town on the comprehensive plan update, and, yeah, we're also very busy with supporting the opportunity to develop relationships. So we have Mr. Wingfield and his colleagues across the New River Valley together, once a month for lunch, great opportunity for them to build relationships as local government managers, and then when we have projects that we're talking about as a region, they have existing relationships and they're able to take that information back to you all, and then we're able to go find resources to support those projects. And we have lots of other regional meetings that we host, so really a focus on relationships. And I often like to remind folks, the work that we're involved with, it takes a long time, but there's a lot of winners as a result. It's, it takes a while to get there for some of these, but they are big projects with big wins. So our board, we are government agency, and there's twenty-six board members. Town of Christiansburg's been very involved with this organization for a number of years. We have, Mr. Wilson just came off the board, and Ms. Hackett is new to the board. We also have a citizen appointee from the Town of Christiansburg, Mr. Hill Johnson, your planning commission chairperson. He's been on our executive committee for several years, and he is currently serving as chair of the regional commission. So a lot of involvement with leadership in Christiansburg. State code requires us to have fifty-one percent or more local government elected officials on our board, and with the universities on, that's something we always are keeping track of, making sure we have that elected official ownership of the organization. And higher ed representation, those are often senior vice president roles. So our organization's been growing recently, we grew during the pandemic, and then we're growing again in support of some regional programs, so we're at twenty-one staff now, we're, we're currently recruiting for one more position to support a regional tech hub grant award that was recently received. But these are the main program areas we're involved with, housing, transportation, economic development, and land use planning like the comprehensive plan. Community health is a space that we've been more involved with over the past couple of years through the pandemic response and partnership with the Health District, and then now we're working on opioid abatement response, called the New River Valley Recovery Ecosystem, that is just launching now, you hear more about that. And then we have a finance team of four, because we have a lot of funds moving through the organization that are supporting not just us, but also the workforce development board across the New River Valley. So focus a little bit here on pandemic response, this is such a good story that we want everybody to be aware of. We did an after-action report because there was so many, lots and lots of activities that took place, and if we ever see ourselves again confronting a pandemic or some other regional crisis, we want to be able to spin back up some type of organizational structure so we can implement. We wanted to be able to capture that in an active, or in the after-action report. So I think some of the, the main things that we drew out of this was that there was joint leadership, Dr. Bissell and retired police chief Anthony Wilson were the co-leaders of this, and that really helped a tremendous amount in guiding the day-to-day, hour-by-hour decisions. We did find that this was the only region in the Virginia and in the country that we could see so far that actually pooled CARES Act dollars to respond as a region. We were the first to have drive-through testing in the Commonwealth of Virginia, we were the first to have a general COVID-nineteen call center that was operated at the Health District, and then we were also the first to have a vaccine call center, and that was something that our organization stood up. It's, it's now Plasky County Innovation Center, and we have a picture in here in a moment of that space, but we had people calling from all over the country because they heard that there was a vaccine call center, and they were trying to get scheduled. Say, well, I own property, can I come there? And like, no, this is full-time residents in New River Valley. It was just unbelievable what we observed by having these resources available. We were continuously the first in the, in the state to move through vaccine groups, so we would get through a segment, and then we were told to wait until we could get another shipment of vaccine because they needed other portions of the state to get caught up to us. We're just very efficient in that process. We had a lot of communications happening between the public information officers, they were talking three or four days a week. Virginia Tech was instrumental in providing some graphic design services, and, again, they were all talking regularly. And then Mr. Wingfield and his colleagues, we were facilitating those conversations three and four days a week to make sure that local management managers were coordinating on policies, if they were opening or closing facilities, that they were doing that in unison across the region. And then there was also significant investment through New River Valley Community Services with that pooled funding for a crisis de-escalation center. So this is a facility for folks who are in mental health crisis and allowing them to avoid an emergency room visit, they have a place, they can be triaged and treated from there. So this is unified command of retired police chief Wilson there and Dr. Bissell with the New River Health District, and this is the organizational structure that they were operating, as I mentioned, hour-by-hour, day-by-day, it was medical, law enforcement, logistics, education, planning, finance, admin, and communications. It was, it was quite a big lift, and a lot of people involved. This is the pooled funding, and this was done on a per capita basis across the New River Valley, so that's why they have the different amounts in the upper-right portion of that slide. See, you know, two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, all the way up to one-point-five-million from Montgomery, and then the left-hand side, you can see where those resources were invested. A lot of PPE, and that was for the general public, so everybody would have access to masks, you should remember that time where people were making masks at home because we had no resources, but they had group buying power here that they were exercising. Some of that marketing of be committed, be well, and you see the crisis center renovation, so some of the, some of the larger investments with that pooled resource. We had a partnership that emerged with Virginia Tech and the Frailand Biomedical Research Center with Corillian, and they were doing the COVID-nineteen tests in their facility in Roanoke, and we had several trips a day, they were taking tests from all the New River Valley there and back and forth. This is a quote from Dr. Bissell on that relationship, that Virginia Tech COVID-nineteen lab was a game changer for the district. While other people were still waiting ten days to get results from LabCorp or the CDC, we were getting results back the next day or the following day. It made a big difference when we were doing case investigations and contact tracing in the beginning. So that's, you know, a great resource that, that came about, and we truly benefited from that. So soon after everything was shut down, our organization reached out to the Chamber of Commerce Directors and said, you know, what are you hearing from your small businesses and larger employers? And they said, you know, we want to be open, we want to open for business, we want people to make wages. So we asked them to help us come up with some guidelines for operating safely, and we came out with some guidelines before the Commonwealth even came out with some. So once the Commonwealth came out with guidelines, we needed to update this document, but it was a lot of brain power from around the region to figure out what are the, you know, PPE they need to get, what are the little barriers they needed to get to be able to operate safely, how would you space out on an assembly line? With all the information we had at the time, it was fast-flowing, but we were putting out some guidelines in that space. It was really all about helping people continue to work. So we saw a need to be able to work directly with businesses, so we were able to get a couple of different grant funds to be able to hire three different staff members, one who was the right hand of the Health District Director, Dr. Bissell, Ashley Briggs was in that role. And we, so we initially had investment to be able to provide at no cost for businesses environmental cleaning, legal services, if they had an employee that had some issue with human resources or public relations and messaging. This was early in the pandemic, and we were just going with what we had at the time, and it turns out that those were items that weren't necessarily needed, so we were able to reinvest that in other ways, but we had engaged over four-hundred-and-eighty businesses in this process, we had worked with twenty, twenty-seven different schools, and that's equated to fifty-seven thousand jobs in the New River Valley that received advisement on how to operate safely in the pandemic. And this quote at the bottom, I think is pretty impressive from one of the large manufacturing businesses in the New River Valley. So I think that that partnership with the Regional Commission, the Health District, and the Business Continuity Team was incredible for the community, I think it saved lives. So looking at the call center that I mentioned earlier, a remarkable volunteer effort, this was staffed six days a week, nine AM to six PM by volunteers, and we had so much call volume that as soon as we shut down at six o'clock, the voicemail would get full an hour or so later, and we couldn't deal with all that volume, so we had to get, pay for transcription services that would run that and make sure we had local numbers in there to be able to call back immediately the next day. And if you've ever used some of these online platforms for sign-ups for potlucks, and that's what we were using for vaccine sign-ups, it was wild, it was a time of everybody's pitching into making it work, and it was impressive. On the right-hand side there, the be committed, be well, you've seen that everywhere, I saw it in your restroom downstairs, so it's still relevant. So the last thing on this pandemic response was, we wanted to document all of the impressive activity that took place with the task force. This is a timeline from when the task force started meeting, and then the first cases in the New River Valley are across the bottom in that gray area, so you can see before the first cases arrived that there was PPE being purchased, there was outreach to employers and schools, all the way through, when you see the orange line across the bottom, those are cases in the New River Valley by week, and then that yellow line that jumps up, that's the vaccinations by week in the New River Valley, and all the way through once vaccines were readily available to everybody. And so the task force is no longer actively meeting, but they're all available, and we wanted to preserve that or document that structure in case we need it again for any other reason, and so I'll, I'll leave with you all tonight, this is a token of appreciation is that framed pandemic response timeline, so we can all remember the, the great work that took place in the pandemic response. So just a couple more slides for you real quick. Passenger rail, something that everybody's been watching closely, particularly in Christiansburg as a host community here. This is a public-private collaborative that started in two thousand and thirteen, trying to get the state's interest in returning service to the New River Valley, and that's been facilitated by the Blacksburg Partnership. So they have an organization that was that public-private collaborative, and they're still there, and they've kind of evolved into an advocacy organization. You know, what we have now, working alongside of them, is the New River Valley Passenger Rail Station Authority, and Mayor serves as chair of the Passenger Rail Station Authority, Mr. Broughton is legal counsel for that as well. Our organization helped with the initial ridership and station location, that was getting some numbers behind what we thought would garner some interest from the state, and then we also worked on an ownership and maintenance study, was, most communities that have a passenger rail station are a larger city, and they solely own and operate that station, but we quickly recognized in the New River Valley that there's going to be lots of communities that are providing traffic for that, and it didn't seem fair to put the whole ownership operations on Christiansburg when there's riders coming from all over. So an authority was recommended, so we went to the General Assembly and requested enabling legislation to create the authority, we received that two years ago, and now we have this entity that's nine members, seven local governments, and Radford University and Virginia Tech are comprised that. They've adopted bylaws, went through a procurement process for architectural and engineering services for the state. process for architectural and engineering services for the station. And then our organization helped secure a $300,000 grant from the Appalachian Regional Commission for architectural engineering services. So there's local match behind that, but that's, you know, defrays that cost substantially. And last one here is the Virginia Passenger Rail Authority. This is the state entity that is doing all of the heavy lifting on this project. They released the 30% design drawings two weeks ago. And they just issued requests for proposals for the 60% design. It's taking it the next step. Then, right now, the station authority, we have a meeting on the 22nd. And we're learning more about option A, if you've seen that slide deck. Option B is the mall location. Option A is Cinnabar. That was something that we weren't not, we were not necessarily anticipating. But money can only take you so far. And right now, the state is committed to $355 million investment. I think that speaks back to this regional collaboration. To be able to get the state to invest $355 million in service is pretty impressive. We have a lot more work to do. They say option A service date would be 2028. Option B at the mall is 2030. There's significant challenges there with the tunnel and the connector track. But there will be more public engagement. We heard recently they're looking to be in the area, likely in Christiansburg area in April. And that's going to be conducted by the Virginia Passenger Rail Authority because they have an environmental review document that they have to go through before they can really set up the final station location. So that's a quick whirlwind of Regional Commission in general, some pandemic, and briefly about passenger rail. I'll be happy to take any questions or comments that you have. Okay.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Next, we have New River Valley Regional Commission Director of Housing, Jennifer Wilsley, to present on the New River Valley Housing Trust Fund.
So introduce you all to Jennifer, our Director of Housing. Jennifer has been working in housing and working at the Regional Commission for 17 years now. I'm thinking back when that happened. It's been quite a while. But the Regional Housing Trust Fund is a recommendation that came out of the regional plus local stud, housing study that was completed a little bit more than two years ago. And this is, so she'll be able to overview with you all the Housing Trust Fund and the requests that we're putting before all the local governments right now, as well as universities and some large employers to participate in a regional activity. They'll provide some discretionary funds within the region for investing in affordable housing. Right now, when we make an application for affordable housing implementation with the state or federal government, we are very prescriptive in how we have to address what buckets and boxes they'll allow us to check. But this would allow us to work with larger population and affordable housing.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Thanks so much for having me. And the handout that you have will also follow a bit of my presentation as well. So I guess first to talk, I can't really talk about Housing Trust Fund without first kind of talking about affordable housing, which kind of begs a definition. I know we hear the phrase affordable housing a lot, and that is tossed around. But there actually is a definition as to what that means. And the caveat is that it's dependent on where you live and how many households are in your family, but, or sorry, how many members are in your household. But it is basically the median income for your area. And households that are earning 80% of that or below would qualify for affordable housing assistance. And so what I want to impress upon you, though, is that this is a spectrum. And you may be familiar or equate Section 8 housing or housing choice voucher program with affordable housing. And while you wouldn't be wrong, I just want to share that it's a much larger spectrum than just that extremely low income, 30% of the area median income is sort of those households that qualify for that program. But when I reference affordable housing and the work that we're doing, it can go up to that 80%, which for a family of four in the town of Christiansburg is $73,000 a year. And I think we, you know, we all know that there are many occupations that are not giving $73,000 salaries until you are fairly deep into your career. So that includes a lot of our teachers, fire and rescue, municipal staff, police, hospitality, and food service, those types of things. So just wanted you to see that while there is a definition, it is, it is an umbrella of a definition of people that we're serving. So with that, wanted to touch on a couple of initiatives that I feel like have been building blocks for affordable housing work in the New River Valley. First, it's the New River Valley Home Consortium, which may be familiar to you, but that was formed back in 2007. It benefits all of the local governments, all of the jurisdictions in the New River Valley. And it's a, it is a federal allocation from HUD, which currently is about $600,000 a year. And that funding rotates around the region for projects. There have been several that have happened over the years in the town of Christiansburg. And the town is actually gearing up to select its next round of funding here in the next couple of years. The next initiative that Kevin mentioned was the regional plus local housing study. So that was completed in 2021 and gave us a lot of rich data to quantify what we were kind of hearing anecdotally about housing need in the region. And out of that report, we had the recommendation for seven regional strategies, one of which was the creation of a regional housing trust fund. So I'll pause again and just define what I mean by Housing Trust Fund. And it is simply a dedicated, set aside funding source where we can fund the preservation or creation of affordable housing. So that could be rental, that could be homeownership, that can be homeowner rehab. All of those would fall under that definition. So like I mentioned, we finished the regional housing study in 2021. In that same year, the same funder, state funder, who funded us for the housing study work, put out a brand-new grant program. And the Regional Commission received $2 million in housing funding to develop housing in the New River Valley. And we took that as an opportunity to pilot the regional housing trust fund. That involved first, a deep dive of research into what other single jurisdiction or regional housing trust funds had done across the country to try to get some best practices for what worked. We also do, did what we do best, which is to pull together a regional stakeholder group that included every locality in the New River Valley and several other partners that were in the housing space in some way. We had realtors and lenders, nonprofit agencies, developers, all to meet monthly and walk through a pilot program for how we were going to build this trust fund program and award these pilot funds. Something that came up frequently was the home consortium and how that model has worked successfully over the years, two components of which are that the funds rotate around the region every five years, five localities, and the fact that every locality gets to choose how it wants to use its money. So some of the goals that came out of our meeting together and that kind of play into why have a trust fund? Why wouldn't we just use the funding sources that we've been getting from state and federal sources? And part of the reason is that it takes more and more dollars in today's world to make housing developments, really any housing development, but especially affordable housing development, whole to get them off the ground. And so this would be another funding source to help with that effort. It would also be able to be leveraged so that these housing developers could be more successful in the very competitive grant applications that they're going after. These local funds could be a foundational kind of first-in money for commitment. Another goal was that the rules of how the funds would be used would be decided by us locally. Our federal and state funding sources are great, but they come with certain restrictions and strings that give us some gaps for how we can best use the funds for needs in the New River Valley. We are hoping that we can structure our rules to get at those additional needs. One, off the top of my head, we have, we have struggled for a long time in serving the needs of folks who are aging in place with home modifications so that they can stay in their home longer. It's been very difficult for us to figure out a funding source for that. One of, another one I've mentioned before is the localities being able to choose when their turn comes around how they want to use the funds. We're not assigning a one-size-fits-all approach to how the funds are used. Return on investment was obviously a topic of conversation. The first one that wanted to draw your attention to is not financial, but is just a matter of being able to commit more units desperately needed in the region for our folks to live in, for businesses to grow and recruit, and folks to be able to have a place to live when they are looking for housing in the region. And then finally, in support of the regional approach, to be able to have, to be able to award to localities more funds than they invested in a five-year period. And part of that is with the approach of splitting investment between local government and non-local government partners and to share that in a public-private way. And that would look a little like this. So the group walked through several different annual funding scenarios and settled on what was the most conservative model we looked at, which was 600,000 a year. We saw that to still be financially viable to get projects awarded. And that would be split 50/50 between the local governments on a per capita basis and non-local governments. And then you can sort of see how that pools up over time. And the column on the far right would show over a five-year period what kind of funding each locality would stand to receive on a prorata basis. So that per capita amount is based on $1.75. And then the funds are awarded roughly on a prorata, population-based process. And if you're saying, well, this only shows Montgomery, we're here for Christiansburg, what, what does that number look like? This breaks, breaks out more specifically and represents what was actually submitted in this year's joint budget review request, that per capita amount broken. So, do you mean the entities that would be included in that? Yes. So our non-government partners right now are, we're going to start with Virginia Tech, Corillian, Lewis Gale, Radford University, and several other of our major employers in the region. So the same as with the local government requests, these are projections and requests at this point in time, but all how we're trying to back into that 600,000 a year budget. So that purple column actually represents an aggregate of five years. That is money coming from Virginia Tech, Corillian, and Radford. The purple column is investment provided. And that final column would be awards, financial awards to each locality, which means housing developments or housing projects in that locality. So what we're asking for our non-government partners is to basically see themselves as regional players so that money they're contributing to the pool benefits their staff, their recruitment, because they see their home as the New River Valley and not just the address where their business is located. So the way the funds would be awarded are to housing developers, the contractors. So the project would be, could be put together for new construction, homeownership, or rental. Or... It absolutely goes to the people in need because by offsetting construction costs, we then require the rents or the purchase price to be affordable to people making those incomes that I mentioned. So the price will be less than market rate. And that's how the cost benefit gets passed to the end user. Right. It would work in partnership with that because now they don't need to go after a market rate $450,000 loan. They would go after an affordable mortgage of, say, $250,000. So we are buying down the purchase price of the home with these dollars to make it affordable for someone earning within those income limits, the ability to buy the house. Does that make sense? Yeah, please. So for property managers who are renting and for developers who are selling homes, they would still have qualification metrics in place. I wouldn't say we would necessarily open or eliminate certain people just based on our funding. There's still other things that those folks would have to do to go into, into qualify. For rental, you know, you'd have a rental application and whatever that process is, that renter would go through that process. And the same for, for a mortgage. So we don't get into eligibility at that level. The end product goes to those property managers and those mortgage lenders. That makes sense. It's a, we would, it would be a funder. Yeah, one funder usually of, of many to make projects like, like this work.
But you're not involved in one branding cross.
That's the banks, that's the bank. If the bank qualifies you for the loan of 250 on that $400,000 house, then you're a qualified person based off whatever it takes. And, you know, so if you qualify for a loan, then you get the house and, and we contribute the portion we agreed to on that. So if you can in fact get a loan, you have income, you're a working citizen of the United States of some capacity, that you can get a loan, then the funding goes through. But the Regional Commission isn't vetting the people buying the house. That's up to the housing, the banker, the loan mortgage company, and those people. It's not a responsibility of the Regional Commission to vet the individuals.
That is, that's correct. Although we partner with, let's take Habitat for Humanity, for example. They're a common player in this world. Community Housing Partners is another. When they are constructing homes, they are working very closely, usually for lengthy amounts of time, to qualify, to get these home buyers ready to qualify, whether through, through them or a traditional financier. Housing counseling is a big part of that, mortgage readiness, credit readiness. It, it's not an arms-length transaction. It's just those relationships happen with, between Habitat or Community Housing Partners and the home buyer. We just provide funding to a Habitat in order to be able to build the homes. So it's all an ecosystem, if you will, to get these folks ready. Any questions?
Okay.
I only had one more point on, on this before I can open up for broader questions. And that is to just point out that even though these are annual request amounts, the idea and the emphasis given to the group to go after this on a regional and the emphasis given to the group to go after this on a regional level implies a commitment that we can make it completely around the horn, so to speak. And so, thinking of these as five-year cycles is really important for regional equity, so that if whatever locality is number five on the list, that, that they can feel confident that funding would be still available to them. So we're trying to kind of think of these as five-year cycles. And with that, oh, the, the only other thing is to take us up to the present day, which is that we did in fact make those funding awards with our pilot funding to two, to developments for a total of 106 units. As I mentioned, the joint budget request went in in December, and now I am in a season of chatting with boards and councils and folks in pursuit of a fiscal year 25 investment. And then thinking through the long-term of this process, the Regional Commission is actually pursuing a, a nonprofit arm to be able to receive donations and to administer these funds sort of around a missionally-based approach. And so, looking at making that reality this, this coming year. And with that, I'm happy to take any more questions.
You have a more story. Why will they, how we're gonna do this, in that, in that, I think it's great that they're in the house, and it's hard to say, you know, but it's...
Sure. And again, the caveat that there are requests happening, no, they have not made commitments yet, but they have been sitting at the regional table with us for a little over a year now, helping us to build this program. So to answer your question, they, Corillian is missionally bound to conduct a community health assessment every three years, and housing has frequently, regularly been on the list. So the, the hospital has seen the dramatic connection between health, community health, and housing. From a very practical standpoint, which is if your house is unsafe, you are more prone to health concerns, to falls. If you've been hospitalized and you're going back to an unsafe home, you know, all of those things create a higher rate of recidivism to come back into the hospital for one reason or another. So there's a strong connection between community health and, and housing. And then they are also a business. They also have trouble recruiting new doctors, nurses, and staff, because no one can find a home to live in when, when they are hired. And so they feel the pressure from both, both sides, both from their staffing and from a patient perspective.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, next we have Wayne Nelson and Sun Tribe Solar Director of Strategy, Director of Strategy and Business Development, Catherine Knight, to present a solar town, a town solar project.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's been a little over two years since I've had the opportunity to present, so it's an honor and a pleasure tonight. I want to first introduce two of the players here from Sun Tribe Solar, Catherine Knight. She is the Director of Strategy and Business Development. And Nick DiFernando, close enough?
Close enough.
He is the Director of Project Finance. They will participate in this presentation. I want to start by bringing you up to, up to date on the efforts of the Sustainability Committee. You hear this okay?
Yes.
During the summer and fall of 2022, seems like yesterday, the Sustainability Committee, led by Chair, Committee Chair, Councilman Wilson, began discussing the committee's sustainability mission goals and the potential for solar energy generation projects at town facilities. So then in November of 2022, the Engineering Department issued a solar feasibility study request for proposal, or commonly known as RFP, for qualified firms to conduct this study. Four firms submitted proposals to the town on December 19th. Engineering Department selected Sun Tribe Solar for the study, which was completed in August of 2023. Sun Tribe Solar presented the feasibility study results to the Sustainability Committee on October 27th of last year. I want to share those results with you, give you an overview. We asked Sun Tribe Solar to evaluate nine of our facilities, and they used the four-tier ranking system. Facilities were the wastewater treatment plant, aquatic center, recreation center, Public Works Operations Center, Wade's Lane landfill, Town Hall, Police Department, Fire Department, and Rescue. I want to point out that the three facilities at the top, wastewater treatment plant, aquatic center, the two largest energy users we have in town, and then recreation comes in third, and rest of the facilities kind of drop off from there. Excuse me. Now, we asked them to evaluate both ground-mounted solar and roof-mounted solar. I'm not going to spend any time on ground-mounted, because there were no recommendations for that here, not at present anyway. So they took a comprehensive study approach. They look at the roof of the facility, the type, is it a flat membrane roof, or is it a sloped standing seam metal roof? Look at the age of the roof, and if there's any warranties associated with the facility on the roof. Looking at the building, the orientation of the building, facing south is the preferred direction, the size of the roof, you know, how many solar panels could they get on there? And I also gave them a year's worth of energy usage from our facilities for them to study. Then they looked at our utility rates from AEP, look at the blended utility cost and the rate schedule. So Tier Four, that's the lowest tier. Three, had some challenges, Public Works Operations Center, a lot of, lot of small buildings with separate meters, and that's not really cost-effective. Fire Department had a membrane roof installed in 2011, therefore replacement in the near future may be, may be coming, but in talking to, to Billy Hanks last week, he was telling me that he was going to be in there over the weekend when it rained, because he was going to get up there and spot all the points where he's got leaks. Police Department, another membrane roof, installed in the early 200s, 2000s.
Open up for a while.
It is. It may need replacement soon, Val. So that's, that's not a viable location. And Wade's Lane landfill, we looked at that, we thought there'd be opportunity there. However, you can only use the power you generate at that location. In other words, we can't put that power out into the grid and supply the waste treatment plant and write it off. So Tier Two, these are likely good candidates, but further study would be needed. Rescue, predicting potentially 100% offset of the power use there. And Town Hall, 67% of our power usage here could be offset. So the Tier One, the optimal candidates for solar, is a recreation center. And here you see a preliminary layout of the solar panels. You see there's access to the units on the roof and for maintenance. And then lastly, the aquatic center. Oh gosh, excuse me. Eight o'clock, I'm supposed to take my medicine. So the aquatic center is a Tier One candidate. Nothing up there, just, again, this is preliminary, and we could mount panels across the entire roof structure. So then on the 27th, Sun Tribe Solar came to the Sustainability Committee meeting and presented a proposal for a solar power purchase agreement. And with this power purchase agreement, we could potentially save 1.3 million over the 25-year contract, life of the contract. So at this point, I would like Catherine and Nick to come up and talk to you about a, a solar power purchase agreement proposal.
Thank you, Wayne. Make sure I know which direction I'm headed here.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much for having us this evening. It's been our pleasure to work with Wayne and the many members of the Christiansburg team over the last few months to go through the, the study process and survey your buildings and come up with our recommendations. I'd like to start out by just giving you a little bit of background about Sun Tribe Solar, who we are. We are a leading solar developer in Virginia. We're based in Charlottesville, so not too far away. We have a lot of orange and blue diplomas on our wall, but many, many proud Hokeys in Charlottesville as well. And we also have the distinct privilege to be Virginia Tech's solar provider. You can see a few of our other clients that we've worked with as well up here. Our approach to solar is really through long-term partnerships. We have had the privilege of being able to work with counties like Henrico and Chesterfield, as well as public school districts across the state, over multiple waves of projects to bring both economic value in the form of electricity savings and also meaningful educational experiences for students, for community members. We really are committed to bringing an entire community together around solar. And as part of our role as your solar partner, we also want to work with the Christiansburg community to celebrate what you all are doing, both from a financial sustainability perspective and also an environmental sustainability perspective. So here you can see a few examples of ribbon cuttings, some educational events, and some press releases or public, public relations that we've worked with our customers to achieve. So I'll jump into, as Wayne mentioned, solar power purchase agreements, and I'd like to ask Nick to come up briefly and talk just about how a power purchase agreement works, how it's structured.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. It's a privilege to be here tonight. Kind of a unique experience for me as the finance guy. I'm usually have my nose buried in a spreadsheet or in a contract, so it's a rare privilege here. You know, at its core, a power purchase agreement is simply a contract for somebody to sell electricity to an end user who buys it just to kilowatt hours. But the actual concept is much bigger than that. There's a reason that power purchase agreements are overwhelmingly the mechanism, mechanism that public and private customers here in the Commonwealth and beyond use to go solar. And that has to do with the fact that the, as the purchaser, you're not expected to front any upfront capital, front any money for the ongoing maintenance and operation of the system, or even pay to decommissioning, decommission the system once it's run its useful life, typically 20 to, 25 to 30 years later. And that is because, number one, the cost of solar equipment and the cost to install solar has diminished exponentially over the course of the past 10 to 15 years, continues to do so. And number two, there has never been more incentives from things like the Inflation Reduction Act, the Virginia Clean Economy Act that offer a dearth of, excuse me, a wealth of tax incentives that go into making the cost of onsite solar electricity as affordable as ever. So that is, that's the overview of sort of how that contracting mechanism works. Pass it back to you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we wanted to get into the details of the systems that we have, or the facilities that we have put in this Tier One category. These are systems that make a lot of sense for a power purchase agreement because of their size. As Wayne mentioned, we looked at a number of factors, including roof age and type, energy usage profile, and, and amount. We've designed just, almost, just about an 800 KW system for the recreation center, which would provide 100% of the facility's electricity needs. And we project over a 25-year PPA term, this system would be able to save the town over $850,000 on your electricity bills. The aquatic center, very similar size system, looking at just around 700 KW. In this case, this would provide about a third of the facility's energy needs. We know that nateriums are very energy-intensive, so if you could offset a third of those, that energy with renewable, sustainable onsite solar, that would be hugely beneficial and save about a half a million dollars over that 25-year PPA term. So we just wanted to wrap it up with, Sun Tribe is a leading provider of municipal solar in Virginia. We've had a long track record of working with other local governments across the state. We're committed to working with you and the team to use solar to help meet your goals, both financial, environmental, educational. And we have worked with public sector partners across the state over the last eight years. And with that comes certainty and dependability. And I always love to end on this picture. This is a fifth grade STEM student in Chesterfield County, and this is the first time she's watching a very small solar panel on that piece of cardboard she's holding. Turn on a motor and spin that CD. There is also solar above her on her school's roof. And we find that this kind of interaction, this kind of joy that onsite solar can bring to a community through savings, through educational opportunities, is really what, what brings solar to communities. And we, as your solar partner, would love to help bring that and integrate it with your entire community. So with that, I'll pass it.
I wanted to just add kudos to the town for the thoughtful approach towards these projects, commissioning the feasibility study. It's, it's an approach that other municipalities are now starting to emulate, so I just wanted to, to add that and offer my kudos.
Absolutely.
Comments, questions?
I am with our, because, because, because after we went through like, we turned the year, and had like several things, the whole panel, that, 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 meaning energy, very big of, for, maybe five, maybe twelve, maybe thirteen. Now, as far as you guys, I'm here, and we have a couple of questions, but, you guys, making up. Are you guys also getting grants on the, please help us with this?
Sure. Nick, do you want to talk about the project finance portion, or how these tax incentives come into play?
Yeah, likely no grant funding in traditional sense. Most of these projects are financed through a combination of solar renewable energy credits, which is a function of, a function of Virginia going 100% renewable up until 2050, excuse me. The utilities have until 2015 and meet a mandate to go 100% renewable, and they can do that by building the solar themselves or acquiring what are known as renewable energy certificates. So these, these projects will generate those, and as the generator of the electricity, we can then, we can monetize those and flow those benefits through to the town in the form of a lower payment. So that's one revenue stream. Another would just be the investment tax credit, which is the main federal tax incentive for these systems. The Inflation Reduction Act actually supercharged this benefit. It's now offers 30% of the cost of the system back to the, the generator in, in year one, so it's a very potent... So it's a very potent benefit that's really lowered the, the cost of electricity for onsite solar consumers broadly here in the Commonwealth. And then there's, you know, some ancillary benefits, like accumulated depreciation, which is kind of a finance wonky kind of term, but does translate into some material savings for, for the town ultimately.
We do make, uh, much, correct?
So, so what we're, and we will probably, and on February 27th, I'm going to ask for a public hearing on February 27th here in a little bit. And we'll give you what we think our plan is. So, so Nick told you that the way, the way we save money is they get these credits. We could say, no, we want to keep the credits, but then we got to go out and try to sell them ourself. So by allowing them to be ownership of these credits, we get a lower rate. So what we're going to do is we're going to pay a specific rate. So the proposal that I asked the committee and we all voted on is to bring to the council that we're going to, we're going to take a low rate, let Sun Tribe, or Sun Tribe keep those credits as they come in. So as we put energy back into the grid, they'll, they'll be given certain credits. And then there's companies, I won't say other businesses, but there's other businesses that claim that they, they are green or energy efficient. Well, they'll buy those credits off Sun Tribe and say, look at us, we're, we're, you know, here, we're doing our part to, to save the environment, when they're really not doing what we're doing. But that's the way the system works. And it's the way the town of Christiansburg will pay a lower rate. It's how they fund, where we don't pay to put the solar system on any of our buildings. We don't pay for the annual maintenance. If something goes wrong with a panel or something, it's completely up to them to come do all the repair work. If we were to spend $2 million, put our own system in, could we, could, you know, it'd take us longer to get the return on our investment. So basically, the committee is going to ask you guys, when it's in the mind turn to talk in a little while, to, that we make a public hearing, at which point we will lay out the dollars and cents. Tonight was to, to inform you all that this is, we've gotten this far along, and we think it's a viable enough program to bring to you and the public and say, let's, let's do it. So that was the intent behind tonight's presentation.
So I, uh, here, this, I, you know, the, 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 the,
Yeah, we don't, we're, we're not going to, we're not going to play with those at all.
As far as that goes, I'm glad that, um, we'll get a lower rate.
And that's, and that's how they can afford to put it on our buildings and not charge us.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
I'm not quite done. I'm sorry, Mayor.
You gotta take your medicine. No, we gotta take your medicine. Okay.
I want to just share with you the, our due diligence steps we've, we've taken. In fact, last week, we presented the solar project information to the Recreation Advisory Committee and to the Aquatic Center Advisory Committee last week. Last Thursday, Jerry Henlein and I, our building official, we went to Fluvana County to meet with Sun Tribe, and we were able to observe multiple systems there. There, we were hosted by the Assistant Superintendent, and he was very, very informative and very, very big on solar. And I asked for references, and I've got three positive responses from Sun Tribe solar clients, and they all answered the same questions I sent to them, and they were all positive. Yeah, I do, I do want to throw in a couple things here. Yes, they, they presented a proposal that had, what you've seen tonight, is they retain the credits, we get the benefit of the energy savings. Now, there's another proposal where we keep the credits. We don't see as much savings in, in the energy. However, they have a group that works all day, and that's all they do, is deal in these credits. And I don't see the town going in that direction.
You're the energy stock exchange, huh?
Yes, right. So as Councilman Wilson stated, if, if we were okayed for a public hearing on the 27th tonight, then we would run ads, two concurrent weekends in the newspaper. We would have a solar franchise ordinance and power purchase agreement public hearing on the 27th, and then potential action by council on March 12th. And that's all I have, and I thank you all so very much.
Very encouraging, very, very interesting.
Yes, it was, it has been, very.
All right, next we have the citizens' comments, which is a, basically a time set aside, three minutes per person, that you can come forward and discuss issues on your mind concerning the town. Is there anybody here that would like to address council?
Mayor, council members, I'm Joanne Price Blacksburg, but I have a business in Christiansburg. And I'm here to speak to the resolution to adopt a budget amendment concerning the museum. I can tell you in terms of citizen priority that the museum attendance is in the toilet nationwide. I taught at the Met, the Metropolitan Museum in Manhattan in New York City. And even that museum's attendance has suffered since COVID. On the heels of COVID, then, there's Bidenflation, and people are really having a hard time. The housing situation, it's just this, the young lady just talked about, people being able to afford housing. So basically, there is a changed focus. The focus now for most people is on survival. The longer this has gone on, the worse it has become, reaching deeper and deeper into the mid to upper range of the middle class, just as she just showed on her chart. We're talking about people making $70,000 a year and can't afford housing. Look at the other people who are on that lower pay scale. It's much more exacerbated for them. So I did a four-year request for five years, and the museum has received $225,000 from Montgomery County. I don't have the numbers for how much they've received from the town of Blacksburg, the town of Christiansburg, and how much from grants. Grants is another form of taxpayer money. So what is the return on investment for the average taxpayer? What are we realizing contributing money to the museum? And also, where is the accountability? What is the museum's social and community impact? And how is the money spent? Where is the line item accountability to the council, town council, and the taxpayers? Are taxpayers' funds commingled with other fund sources to pay the salary of the director, who is also a sitting councilman? These are just some questions that aren't answered. So here is where citizen attention is.
You have 30 seconds.
It's on homelessness. There has been over a 200% increase in homelessness. So I admonish you as a council to change course and begin to consider representing the townspeople, the taxpayer, and the needs of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mike Scary, 11 Pepper Street, Christiansburg. I just wanted to speak on Budget Amendment Seven. I think the museum, and full disclosure, I'm a privately a small, very small supporter of the museum financially, but I think, because I think the museum is an important cultural store for Montgomery County and for the town of Christiansburg and the surrounding area. And I think it's, I think it's a real, real treasure to have. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Here, no one saying no one. We'll close the citizens' comments section. We'll go to committee reports. For the committees that met, the other sustainability, we know what you've been doing there. Anything else?
Nick, can I make the motion for the public hearing now, or you want me to wait?
You could do it with the committee reports.
So I'd like to make a motion that we set a public hearing for February 27th for the solar sustainability project?
Second.
A lot of second. Any, any, have a motion and a proper second, and an improper third. Any comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is six of, thank you very much. Discussion and action by mayor and council. The discussion of a planning commission application. We have an application submitted for Mr. Scary, who just spoke, requesting to come onto the planning commission. We have room for at least one, two more planning commission members. Mike is president of Hometown Security Incorporated. As he said, he lives at 11 Pepper Street. He manages customers, employees, building code compliance, permits, business financing, sales tax, sales tax construction schedule, prepare project record for shop drawings, so on and so forth. Been there nine, 11 years, 12 years, going on 12 years now, right? And previously, he was with Roanoke City School. As a class instructor to the left.
Motion to approve his appointment to the planning commission.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
It's, it's. We've advertised, over the last year, we've had, we've had applications out for the last year and a half, and we've not had any, yes, ma'am, and we've not had any applications whatsoever. Is that correct? Yes. It was planning commission, that's what we're talking about. I think we've advertised it on our town website, too. I think we have. No, it wasn't this, it was far back, it was, but I think that was, we've.
I think so, with the, with the, with the, with the, with the, yeah.
No, Ms. Hicks, I know what I'm talking about. That was with, that was with Zoney.
Yeah, with Zoney.
We did that, but we've done, we have, we have advertised for planning commission members in the past, no response. I mean, I don't think we should put it out. We don't, we don't put ads out in paper anymore. We do everything, I guess, mainly on, on our website. And at this point, if there has not, if there has not, uh, to our, to our. Any other comment? Madam Clerk?
Swen Bishop? Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Absent.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is three to two, one extension. Blackwell, people.
Thank you. Thank you.
Resolution to adopt Budget Amendment Six for the increase of mayor and town council salaries.
Make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
Yeah. I personally don't feel like, right now, we still haven't, right, I think, um, of working on, because, because of the, 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 I think because of everything that's going on right now with the, and, um, I want to be, because of, 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 because
Thank you. Any other comments?
In December, you voted to approve it.
I did, but the more I thought about it, the more I changed my mind about it, especially because after the, before, we have people speaking out in the public, or, 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 or.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, like I said before, I've been going on my 11th year, and far as I know, town council has not had a raise, and it's left up to us to give ourselves a raise or not to. I mean, if someone else wants to take on that responsibility, I'll open it up to them. But I just think we should be in line with the Blacksburg, and of course, we won't catch up, we're kind of a state too, they have much more territory, but I just think, like I said, this is my 11th year, so I'd have a little raise.
I'd like to speak to that as well. I'm new, okay, and I've, I've got a big learning curve, but I do know what it takes to get up here. It takes a lot of work, and it's a lot of work every week, just the reading. If you're doing your job, it is a day's worth of work every week. I think if we want to put quality people up here, then they need to be compensated. It certainly is not what other places are paying, even with the raise. I'm, I'm a conservative person myself, and, you know, I, I don't think it's out of line, or I would say something. So, you know, it, being conservative, but also understanding what it takes, just the amount of copies, you know, that I had to run for this ninth, ninth meeting alone, that costs money. And, you know, going around and looking at properties and, and, you know, trying to have insight before we get up here to make intelligent decisions, that all has a price. So unfortunately, I want to, do disagree with you on this, you know, that it should not be a public hearing, and the people sitting here do deserve a raise.
Anyone else?
One comment. I, although we're approving this, I do think we don't need to force it, so I do think it's up to, I, I think it can be up to each member's discretion if they choose not to accept, and I think that's completely acceptable.
Casey, you got anything? No, but, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
So that is five to one, and that, uh, motion carries. Resolution to. It was in your, it didn't sit out, if you looked it up. It was $10,752, I think that's what it was.
$10,432.
And it's for the remaining six months, five months of the, of the budget. Okay. So, resolution to appropriate funds per Budget Amendment Six.
Make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
That is for the museums.
No, that's.
No, this is for the fund, uh, fund, right? You got a motion and a second. Discussion?
I want to, now that I don't feel we don't deserve it, but I, I don't feel like, um,
Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Okay, so, resolution that funds are appropriated for the budget. Resolution to adopt Budget Amendment Number Seven for increase of community support amount of $10,000 for Montgomery County Museum.
Make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yeah, I don't think we can, true, things, but, right now, especially because, we, we voted on this several times already, things coming out several times, I'm tired of seeing this on the, at every time, and I really think, you know, we, our comment was, we, you know, wait for the, you know, for the council members, but the last council member voted, you know, not to vote, and then all we waited was a few moments, you know, this year, so, we voted eight on the last one, therefore, so, therefore, I don't think, you know, to be back, not, and being back on the, under the agenda, but it could really say, physically, we need support for the museum, and it's not that I don't support it, I think, there are very, very things, but I think, hey, you know, who really like this, you know, the, of, of, it feels like it does, because, especially if they have rental places in there, and they have another property, they also have a rental, they have, they have control, and so, I really don't, you know, especially after, I hear tonight, that, you know, they have got, you know, $25,000, just from, probably, from, 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 right here, so, I don't know.
In a point of correction, in the December meeting, it was approved by council, and I think it was three, one, and one abstention. And Mr. Schell Walker was.
Maybe he wasn't there, the name, you voted, you had.
Whatever, whatever, that's exactly right. But it did pass though council last week. All right, Madam Clerk?
I have a, my statement, uh, continue, I mean.
That's fine. That's all community support, even the.
Agents, yeah, agents, not, we, we, we.
Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Nay.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Abstain.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is three to two, one abstention, motion carries. Resolution to adopt to appropriate funds per Budget Item Number Seven.
Make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Abstain.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is again, three, two, and one abstention, motion carries, funds be appropriated. Staff reports, town manager?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. Mr. Broughton?
No.
Any other staff members here? Thank you. Under other business.
I see. I think.
Yes, it is. All right, and now you're there, ready. Okay. I'd like to request a closed meeting under Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A3 for the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. The closed meeting is being held for discussion of potential purpose of property located in downtown Christiansburg. Additionally, would like to request a closed meeting under Code of Virginia 2.23711A3 for the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. The closed meeting is being held for discussion of potential sale located at the intersection of Peppers Ferry Road Northwest and Booker T. Washington Parkway Northwest, and approximately five acre northeastern portion of Tax Parcel 435-A-3A, parcel ID 270079.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Hold on. Can I chime in real quick?
Yes, well, sure.
Okay.
We're going to close session?
Well, not for all of it. So, in reference to the first closed meeting, as I had previously disclosed in writing, I'm employed by the Montgomery Museum, whose address is 4 East Main Street, Christiansburg, Virginia. The museum owns real property downtown, identified as parcel number 0003512. I have a personal interest in any transaction involving the museum. Since this, since the first closed session involves property downtown, it may impact the museum, I will not participate out of an abundance of caution, but I'd like to be in the second one, so.
Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is six oh. We will take about a three or four minute recess before we call closed session. Mr. Jenkins, who will come to get you when we get through that section?